All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the main meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president of the board. Let's go around the circle and introduce ourselves and then we'll end up with our folks on Zoom. So Dorothy, can you start with me?
Dorothy, board member.
This is John Johnston, Vice President.
Yeah, so Judith.
Judith Quinn, board member.
John, we just heard from you. Thank you, John.
Tressa Setlock, treasurer.
John Melton, board member.
All right, we do have a forums that we can do for today, and we're actually going to start with the celebrations. So let me turn it over to Michael. Good morning. I'm Michael Blackwell, St. Mary's County Library Director, and we have three recognitions for staff this morning. And the first are to Sarah Stevenson and Jill Hutchinson, who are our points with St. Mary County Public Schools. And we have a considerable partnership on resources with the schools, and we provide them with lots of digital access they do not have, including live homework help and a number of databases. So these recognitions are for both of them who are working with the schools, providing those resources, answering questions, troubleshooting if anything ever happens. So thank you both very much, Sarah and Jill. And for our next one, we have a more special recommendation for Katie Kalenda. Katie, for continually taking on additional challenges and responsibilities in the library system while completing your MLIS, you've moved from part-time librarian to full-time librarian and then to assistant manager for children's services. Throughout your studies, you've maintained a high level of service to our community and organization. Congratulations on completing your Master of Library Information Science. Very well done. Can we have a certificate for you? Congratulations. That is a lot of time and work.
Thank you.
All right, the next item of business is the approval of the April 2023 minutes. Does anybody have comments or questions about the minutes?
I will move to accept the minutes from last month as presented.
Thank you, John.
A second.
Thank you, Tressa. Any discussion before we vote? Somebody give a folks' chance. Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? John, can I ask you to just say something so that we know that you are able to participate fully here?
All right, yeah, I voted aye. Also, I was trying to do so through the chat, but I can do so vocally as well.
Got it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next item is the approval of the monthly expense ledger, the EALs, which we have in our packets. Any comments or questions about these?
Other questions for April? Four, or is it just a general?
It's our entire, it's our entire credit card payment. So the, some of the admin staff have credit cards. We pay them all as one. And so they all have to present their receipts at the end of each month and have the approvals done and collate to what accounts all of those payments are going to, and then we pay the credit card. It's one payment. So our credit cards are with PNC, our bank account is with PNC. It's just a direct transfer from our account to PNC, to our credit card.
And those will be for conference expenses, for materials, for supplies. Basically, it's just an expedited way to try to get some expenses done.
On page three, what was the purchase for four imprint?
For five oh three seven two. Down near the bottom.
Pins and pencils for publicity and some other reading items.
All right.
Can I ask, going back to the credit card payment question that Dorothy raised on page two, are the expenses on the credit card memorialized in this document or somewhere else? Yes, we have statements and staff have to submit a invoice and a approval, you know, for the, for when they, when they buy something, for everything they buy, well, it's on them.
The, the cost will show up in different line items on your budget. This is just the, the payment.
Right.
So it's, and the EAL slash monthly expense ledger is literally just each payment we made. So these, this is a check or an ACH or something like that, that we have sent money out. These all will show up in the budget.
Right. Thank you. All right, I think we are ready to entertain a motion to approve the EALs. Or Dorothy, please.
Well, May second, the Ingram staff purchases.
Those are our books. That's Ingram is who we buy our books from.
But I mean, it's a staff purchase. Are those different from other?
Yes. Yeah. So they are, they are two different things that could occur in the staff purchases. We have a Vet Book Club, Veterans Book Club at Lexington Park that is run through donations from the Maryland Humanity Society. And so we buy books for those veterans that participate in the book club, and that runs through here. And then we also have a benefit of being a librarian. They can buy books through Ingram at our price, and then they pay us back. So you're only seeing the payment, but the, the staff will put in, will pay us for them.
That benefit extends to board members, incidentally, and on a hardcover, you'll frequently have a forty percent discount.
I have a quick question on page five, lower half, Schwab Account Managers for nineteen hundred. Was that what we owe Schwab as the custodian, or was that going to Asset Strategies? About five up from the bottom.
Schwab Account Managers is the description. It's going to Asset Strategy, which you should see under the second column. So the third column is just the description that I put in there. There are Schwab Account Managers. So Asset Strategy, that is their payment.
Can we do that quarterly?
Yes.
All right.
Kind of on a similar note, there was another payment to Asset Strategies on the first page on April thirteenth.
So Asset Strategy, if you remember, increased their prices this year, but they didn't go into effect until, I believe, January first. And so when they billed us for this first quarter of twenty twenty-three, they didn't update the billing schedule. And so then they sent us a second bill with the revised amount due. So it was two payments. They made a mistake billing us at the old price and then sent us the second bill with the, the additional amount due.
And those two together, they're the books for that quarter.
Yes.
Thank you.
On the page four, tech ops, especially the mobile library.
That is the amount we paid based on that fifty thousand dollars you gave us last month to pay down the cost of the mobile library. Tech Ops is who we, no, that is who we are paying for the actual library.
The vehicle itself.
That's a lamp.
There is one more payment of fifty thousand dollars, which we are waiting on that grant. So that won't come from us, we hope.
I am, I'm in communication with the state about that, and it looks like we're making some progress on getting that cleared out, but that is fifty thousand in capital funds from the state that delegate Crossby arranged for us. And I, I've had substantial phone calls and emails the last several days, just trying to get that cleared out. And it's looking pretty good now, but we still don't know for sure. Thank you, as always, Belinda, for budget pop quiz every month. Very impressive that your recall abilities. I think we are ready to entertain a motion to approve these EALs.
I'm going to approve EALs covering the period, April tenth to May twelve, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Judith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Treasurer's Report, which we are not revisiting until July, so Tress is off the hook. And we can move on to the Smurla Report. John, do you have an update for us?
Yes, I do. We discussed at our, the last regular meeting, changes to our, the Smurla Retirement Plan, which is a four oh three B. And there was a presentation that we had by representative from Quantum Financial Advisors, which uses CIAA funds. So, but so might be an action item for July. And one change that'll be taking place for Marina will be that, this might have covered this in a previous meeting of our board, was instead of using UPS to deliver items and receive items from Marina, the interlibrary loan, the, well, it will be, there, there will be a trailer set up at the Fairview Branch in Calvert where the items will be dropped off and then, and then, and picked up. And, and lastly, and Judith was a part of this too. We, we had, there's a new employee orientation that the two of us attended at Smurla. And a number of employees of Smurla were there too. It was very well put together. It was fun and informative. And because of the date, May fourth, they chose a Star Wars theme. And so we, I guess it was very well worth my time, I think.
I'm so glad John and Judith are both able to attend. Thank you for.
Welcome.
John, a question for you. Does Smurla have a four oh three B now?
That is my understanding, yes. I can provide, if you wish, some of the, the presentation that, you know, that they gave us.
And are they the current providers, or is this like a competing situation?
It is a, is current providers. They were proposing some, some changes to it for our consideration.
Got it. Thank you.
Welcome.
John, are we still looking for community members to join Smurla?
That, that is my understanding. I've not heard whether Ashley has, has received any applications yet. Last month, I forwarded to our board the paperwork for any interested applicants from the community.
Okay, Michael, I'm willing to be on that board if you need a community member.
Thank you, Belinda. John, could you please follow up with Belinda on that point and kind of explore the process and options from here?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. With that, let me turn it over to Michael for the director's report. Well, we've asked John and Al from Asset Strategy to join us at nine forty-five, and here we are right at nine forty-four. So I'm going to turn it over to them. I have met with them earlier this week to discuss some changes to the OPEB fund that they would like to make. And I will put those changes up to you, but I reviewed them and approved them. The basic idea is to try to lessen the risk in the fund and to improve the return. And they have about five specific suggestions to make to you for how that would work. And I've told them that they may have as much time as it takes to move forward with that or an hour. So this is a chance for you to talk with them at length. So John and Al, please take it away.
Michael, thank you very much, and committee members, we always appreciate the time. And, and Michael's been very helpful, these pre-calls, sure, that we're on target and there's no surprises. Let me backtrack in preparation for this meeting. John and I went back to look at some of the prior history when David Saunders was the lead consultant. And to refresh everybody's memory, this was in December twenty twenty-one, we made a number of adjustments to the portfolio. And we are taking the next step in the same process of looking for more efficiency. And so here's what happened back in twenty twenty-one. And it was really focused on the domestic equity, making changes from passive implementation to active managers. So the small cap, you terminated the Schwab Small Cap Fund and put in the Fuller Failer, again, actively managed small cap. International, the Schwab International ETF, again, passive was removed and with our recommendation, MFS International was put in the portfolio on your fixed income. You had a Schwab passive aggregate, so core bond product. You also had a short duration Lord Abbott. Both of those funds were removed and replaced with Midwest. And finally, and this is where there are a couple of open issues that we're going to discuss, you had a high yield commitment to a Vanguard High Yield Fund that was taken out of the plan. And you also had a emerging market Schwab Passive Solution. And there were no replacements put into the portfolio. So we're going to look in the report and point out in the asset allocation targets, you still show the approval and an allocation target of five percent above high yield and emerging. But there's no managers have been retained in those two spaces, which we'll, we'll address. John, what do you have anything before we move on to the quarterly report?
No, you've got it.
Any questions from the committee on where we're going to take you?
So far, so good. Thank you.
Okay, great. So Michael, in the quarterly report, John's going to take us through briefly recap of the market environment in the first quarter, which is always helpful in understanding how managers performed and help expectations as we look forward also for the markets.
Sure. And let's see, this was the quarterly report that we had sent. A, Michael, do you do any screen share or, because we can just direct people to the pages in the quarterly report?
Everyone here has the report in front of them, but how would you prefer to do that? Screen shares or just? I think if we can do a screen share, that would be great. And if you could also point us to the right pages too. Thank you.
Yeah, no, happy to help. So let me share my screen here. Hope the host has disabled participant screen sharing, but I'm sure the host can enable that.
She is working on that right now.
All right.
You should be able to try again.
All right, let's do it. Ah, yes, we're getting there.
Thank you, Laura.
Now, thank you for the help. So for the committee, we're looking at this cover, I'll put the cover page up. So it's our quarterly investment analysis for March thirty-first. And I'm going to jump right down into, you know, just what happened over in the quarter. You know, we've had a six-month gain through the second, through the first quarter there. And, but during the quarter, there was some volatility that went on because there were some issues in the banking sector. But growth became a really strong performer, outperforming the value sector. And international markets were up strongly as well. And bonds kind of made some positive contributions to portfolio performance in the quarter. And so on page four, you can take a look at, you know, the indices, some of the key ones in there, the S and P five hundred, you know, up seven and a half percent. Most notable was the international, the dark blue was up eight and a half percent. And, but for the year, you know, they're, they're all down just because of the effect of what happened in twenty twenty-two. But most notably, I think, is September thirty of last year was the low in the market. And since that time, you can see how the indexes have recovered in the last six months. Notably, again, the, the international component was a pretty strong performer in terms of coming back into market. So the fund was able to reap some of that with their exposure to that MFS fund. If we look on page six, you can kind of see though, looking at the S and P five hundred, it was up a lot more back in February due to some of the, you know, op, potential optimism that was going on. But, you know, in February, we saw CPI, inflation was still high. That knocked it down a bit, and then the Silicon Valley Bank failure came along. So it kind of went up, you know, in each of those quarters, but now the eight percent or so rise of it in the full, full quarter, you see the roller coaster that it was on. And what I want to do is just, you know, help you see just in terms of page nine, looking at just, you know, what we've been through in terms of the, the increase in interest rates, which does have, you know, it's one of the fastest and, and strongest rise in quite a long time. And this has had quite a, you know, just stirs the pot, if you will, in the market and puts some turmoil into it. So then that's what twenty twenty-two did. You know, this is on page ten, what is the Treasury Yield Curve, and it is the, in essence, the rate of interest on all treasury bonds from, from three months all the way out to thirty years. And typically, you know, you can see, we can see on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, you know, just how low interest rates used to be. And now we can see this in the green line for December thirty-one, you know, how high they rose to through the end of the year. And in the first quarter, you know, the market was having interest rates decrease somewhat because, you know, they're thinking that there's either going to be, have to be a recession and the Fed, and at some point in the future, and the Fed is going to have to reduce rates. So even though the Fed is saying we're going to be, we're going to keep hiking, and even if we stop, we're not necessarily going to start decreasing rates. So the market is, you know, betting against that. So that has an impact on returns in the, in your portfolio. I'll skip that and a couple of pages and just go to page thirteen, where in essence, you know, the Fed and interest rates go higher as they, as they peak. What has traditionally happened is that the economy has, you know, some turmoil because of the change in the interest rates and recessions begin to take place. Hasn't happened, hasn't started. The economy, you know, the employment is extremely high. And, you know, there's no sign that, you know, there's going to be a recession right now. But in the next six, six to nine months, potentially, there could be. And so it'll be interesting to see what happens, but some of the changes that we're proposing to portfolio can potentially help with ease some of the volatility that's been going on in it. Anybody have any questions before I turn it over to Al to head into the next part of, of the report?
Good. This is Michael. I actually have a question for you, and if you could answer this one correctly, then you are an amazing prognosticator, but I was reading this morning that it looks like there, there may actually be a deal to prevent default on the US debt with some of the more extreme factions on either party, perhaps not being very happy with the result, but maybe a compromise. Does that possibility of a default? Does that um possibility of a default um make this a time we should be avoiding any further investments right now? Or are you saying go ahead?
Well, let's see.
We, yeah, as I say, not an easy question to answer.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, I think the thing is, is that um. The wha- what we try to look at when we're looking at institutional portfolios like this is there's a long term perspective. To your investment strategy. And the assumptions in that is in that uh, you know, achieving those returns over a long period of time is that. During that time, there is going to be volatility. There is going to be um periods where. Uh, you know, looking here on page fourteen, um, looking at last year. You know, the one year through March thirty first, you're going to have. Periods of of returns that look like this uh in the red. Um, but. If we go out over, you know, looking out over the last ten years or fifteen years. You know, you can see what returns have been. In the uh, in the markets. And so, you know, during those ten or fifteen years, we can think of what has been going on since that time. You know, we had the two thousand and eight uh, you know, global financial crisis. Um, between then and now, there's been any number of bumps in the road, including. The uh, I believe it was the two thousand and eleven, um, you know, debt ceiling debacle that took place where. Uh, US treasury bonds actually got downgraded a bit. But, you know, when we see these things coming along, we're not telling um, you you know, clients. And uh, I don't think most others would be saying, sell all your investments today and put them in cash. Um, you know, because we're looking at a much, we have a much longer term time horizon to achieve the goals for the portfolio. And so therefore, uh, you know, the portfolio, because of that, can weather. These divots that arise when, you know, there's a lot of turmoil in the market. So I'll stop there and is that helpful, hopefully?
And short, we could summarize by saying, there's never a bad day to make a good investment.
That's true.
I guess my immediate concern is that if there's a lot of volatility right now, it might not be the best time since it's likely that a- any good investment right now is going to. Take a hit.
Well, but even if it does, that's not the long term history that we're looking for.
I I just gonna say it might not be a. The very best time right now, but let's just move forward.
I do have a question on the page fourteen, if I may.
Sure.
Let's use that top line, line number one as an example. And we go across to the last ten ten years column. Is that the total? Or is that the annualized return over ten years?
That's the annualized return over ten.
Annualized return.
Right, not the cumulative.
That's good. Thank you.
Sure. No, and.
And.
Yes.
Uh, no, pl- John, please finish your thought.
Oh, no, no, I was gonna turn it, turn it over um to.
Oh, got it. Well, I, let me just say, I really appreciate how you kind of walk through um the pages and the graphs and everything. That's exactly the tone that we are looking for. So thank you.
Oh, sure. Happy, happy to help. Apprec- and uh, um, you know, uh, Michael, uh, you know, thanks for your stumper on there. Hopefully I passed the quiz. I know you you the uh, I I I heard the pop quiz that you were giving your uh finance officer there, so. Um.
Yeah, we uh.
But I wasn't her.
Yeah, um, it's uh. O- obviously just an immediate concern, but we are absolutely in it for the long term and recognize that growth will come long term in a well, uh, you know, sort of. A well um, sort of allocated as a well allocated fund.
Great.
One more from. One more for me, if I might. We don't have it in our packet, but I know you guys can put your hands on it. There is a chart showing returns or missing the X number of.
Oh, yeah.
At some point, can you get that down to us?
Sure. We'll, we'll see what uh, yeah, we'll see, we can dig that up. Um, and uh, we know what you're talking about. We could have that in.
Thank you very much.
In the next meeting, if you'd like. Good. So Al, let's um.
John, page seventeen. And before I start. I'm very impressed with the questions. In our business, there's a a saying that if the consultants are doing all the talking. It's really not a very productive meeting. And uh, questions are the the key, so. Don't be shy, and this is uh, your time. I want to make sure we respond to any questions you have. So here we are, talking about compliance, certainly an important component for the committee and also responsibility we. Take on. And this chart lays out. A number of key metrics. To the left, you can see asset classes. So those, this all comes out of the uh investor policy statement. So these are the asset classes that are approved for use in the plan. Of large cap down to tips. In the third over are the strategic, long term strategic targets for each asset class. So I'll use large cap as the example. The target there is twenty seven percent. To the two columns over, you see it's a labeled range. So for each asset class, there's an upper and lower band. So example for large cap. Will be in compliance to as low as seventeen percent. Or on the high side, highest thirty seven. So that allows for market movement, allows for some tactical conversations that uh we might have occasionally. Then the last column tells us of the ready asset classes where we're out of compliance on the asset allocation. And you can see the no. That we have under international equity. Where there's a uh, a slight overweight above the the upper band. And part of this is driven by my comments earlier. Emerging markets, as you can see on the target, is five percent. But we don't have a manager in that asset class. You can see on our actual. To the left, it's a zero, there's no money invested in emerging. So all the international now has migrated up to the international category. And if uh we. Remove that five percent from emerging. The international target is fifteen and. We uh. Could be back at balance, but we're gonna talk about that later under asset allocation and to fix. A couple of these issues that are. Not that. Truly representing how we're invested. You'll also see the same thing under high yield, which I mentioned. Earlier from steps taken back in two thousand and twenty one. That a target of five, but there's no manager and there is no actual assets in the uh, in the plan. As we speak. So again, compliance and. We are going to evolve and make some asset allocation recommendations to uh really put this in alignment with how you're investing. Let me stop there in case I confuse you with all these moving numbers.
And the vertical line in the middle of the chart represents the center point. For all those respective range, whatever they are.
Yep, and you can see how you have overweights to the right, underweights to the left. And that is the uh. Starting point. Before I move from this page, when we get into total portfolio performance, we have two benchmarks. One is a peer universe, which we're going to discuss. We've been looking for a better fit. Which Sean's gonna make a few comments. But then we also have what we call a target benchmark, which is made up of the targets for these asset classes. And on page twenty four of the report, I'll I'll show you that, that we.
I I'm sorry, I have one more question about page seventeen.
Yes.
Uh, you. Are there other categories of assets where there is not a manager besides international equity and high yield fixed income?
No, the two uh voids are emerging market. And high yield. All the other asset classes have, as you can see, uh, money allocates to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Was your question meant to be out there in the whole wide world or just on this chart?
Just on this chart, and I I misunderstood initially. Thank you.
All right, let's move to the actual performance for the quarter and other time periods. This is on page eighteen. At the top, here is this period universe that we're looking to find a better fit. So right now. This is a public defined benefit. Fifty million and below. And it's not a really tight fit for. The structure of what you're doing with the OPEB. So, John, take a minute on the quest for uh health and welfare and. Sort of the hurdles that we're running across to find a better.
Yeah, within the performance reporting service that we work with, they do have a health and welfare plan um. Uh, peer group. Uh, we're looking to wa- uh, use that, but the issue that uh. We're running into with it is just the number of participants is very low. And so um, before we start to try and um, you know, shift any of these reports over into it. Um, we want to make sure that we're getting a valid comparison, you know, that it's meaningful. For showing this. And so unfortunately, um, at this point, we're um. It's in a, in a de- defined benefit um peer group that um, you know, is uh. Would be somewhat similar uh to some extent in in some uh with regards to the asset allocation, but not squarely like it. So. Um, you know, the, well, hopefully, if you. We can bear with us uh for another quarter or so, we'll hopefully be able to get that the health and welfare plan um. Looked at.
But you think that would be more apples to apples comparison for what our fund should should look like and how it's performing if you can uh generate that, right?
Yes, yes, because you know, th- this is really a pension plan that has um much different um. You know, uh, investment perspective, and so the asset allocations uh could be somewhat skewed. Um, health and welfare plans are uh actually for health benefits, which um somewhat. Um, you know. Are, they're not exa- exactly like what your OPEB is, but um it's closer to it than uh defined benefits. And so um, you know, this is where i- in a lot of cases, uh depending on the objective of the portfolio. Investment, um, you know, and we might not place a a lot of emphasis on the peer group. As much as we're looking at the benchmark per se.
Well, my understanding i- is that this is pretty much health benefits. The ultimate aim of it is that. That when we get to it being seventy five percent funded and that figure of seventy five percent comes from Bolton, our actuary.
Mm hmm.
That we would have it able to pay out the monthly um, the the monthly payments. Uh, for health insurance from our retirees. So how is that different from what you're talking about?
Uh, the health and welfare, um.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that it is per se. Um, some of them may be um. You know, multi employer, what they call Taft Hartley plans. That might be for, you know, active um. Uh, workers per se, so it might be a little bit different. We're, again, we're diving into getting some. Definitions from our service provider on performance reporting. Uh, to make sure, you know, just how similar or different it is and um how. Similar it is relative to the asset allocations as well, because. Asset allocation really drives a lot of the outcomes in performance. And so um. Yeah, so we want to make sure that um, you know, we're, we're, we're showing it in um, in. An appropriate comparison.
And now, and my correction that the group you'd like us to compare us to are probably more similar in looking for a. As high a yield as possible, but as with as low a risk as possible.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we want to make sure of in terms of how the, how the, how the uh peer group is um, is invested. So they, they could be, uh, you know, what we want to make sure of is that, you know, you have a um, you know. Pretty much close to a sixty five percent equity, thirty five percent fixed income portfolio. Um, you may be similar in some respects to the um, to the defined benefit peer group, but we want to take a look at these. This health and welfare plan um peer group and, you know, are they similarly allocated? Because they're, they have similar, a similar mission.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, page eighteen, the last line is population.
Yes. That is actually the number of uh pension plans that are in this peer group. Um, so uh, there's uh, depending on the timeframe involved, uh, you know, three months, there were two hundred and thirty seven. Um, you know, public uh defined benefit pension plan. So those are municipalities, counties. Um, could be states as well um that are in this peer group.
Under your care?
No, no, these are um from uh, you know, probably at least a forty different uh investment consult. Institutional investment consulting uh clients or or I'm sorry, uh consulting firms. Um, so. Yeah.
So the last three months, we would rank it twenty fifth out of two hundred and thirty seven?
Correct.
So pretty good.
Yeah, the twenty fifth percentile, not, not the actual rank. So we look.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, if the floating bar chart, which is right above uh in the, in the actual graph itself. Shows the range of returns from top to bottom. And those lines represent the fifth percentile, the twenty fifth percentile. Right in the middle is the median performer um and down from there.
Sweet, thank you.
So that means that seventy five percent of the other portfolios scored better than we did.
Uh, lower, actually.
Lower.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, last quarter looks, last quarter looks pretty good.
It does.
Previous.
But the intent here, there's two benchmarks that we use. We've been talking about the peer universe. And the second one. The compliance page, we talked about the ass- approved asset classes. So you see target under the return there, five point one five percent. So that's the return for our strategic asset allocation targets. So that looks at. The approved asset classes, the percentage allocation, and it creates a return stream. So we can look at the three months and say. What did the market do based upon our approved asset classes and our approved strategic targets? And it gives us a very tight metric. Are we adding value over and above what the market does? And for the quarter, we added uh seven basis points. Over and above that target. That is the most meaningful. That is the, the true. Bogey that allows us to see how well the portfolio is doing. The peer universe in some other types of portfolios, the Jap with the endowment foundation world. It's a. Very widely used. It's a comparative tool, how they're doing against their peers. It's a very competitive industry. And there, there's a much tighter allocation between the benchmark and actual portfolios. But for our benefit, we're focusing on the other target that truly is uh.
And that target.
Things are going.
Yeah, and when we get to the performance table, that's where we'll get to see the target that we're using. It's the uh. Public market indices. Such as S and P five hundred or Russell um two thousand uh, which is small cap. Uh, index and others like it.
So final comment, this also sets the stage for the discussions on some recommendations. As we go out over time. Once we get past the three years, you can see for the last three years, we've outperformed by by two basis points. Nine point seven two versus nine point seven oh for the target. But for the five and the seven and from inception, we are lagging our strategic target. And I'm going to show you a chart here in the middle in a minute that uh. Looks at both this return stream, but almost how much risk we're taking. And we told Michael on that page, he's very perceptive. He said, yep, we need to uh. Move in a stronger direction, which I'll. Run that in a moment or so for you. So any questions on, this is the annualized. If not, the next page, and I'll pick up the page for a little bit, looks at. If not, the next page, and I'll pick up the page for a little bit, looks at the last. Seven calendar years, so it goes from end of two thousand twenty-two and the far right, two thousand sixteen. And same data, we're comparing against that peer universe or the target. And uh. What you're going to see, and this is part of that annualized performance, particularly once we get past three years. There's only one year on here, which is two thousand eighteen, where the total fund outperformed the target. So there's a consistent pattern of being uh. Lagging our, our long-term target. The only good news that happened in two thousand eighteen. Where the target lost five point two and the portfolio lost less. So there's a more defensive. Uh, confirmation of how the allocation managers did in a, a down cycle.
So on that one, it's safe to say you can be down and still be beating the target.
Correct.
As a target, you are.
And that's certainly in a more defensive type of portfolio. If you look at long-term goals, we certainly want to have competitive returns. But be very cognizant of how much risk we're taking. And avoid, we know term will talk about here in a few minutes, down market capture. So we do better than our target in down markets. And that's only is consistent with. Reserve type of accounts and also this health and welfare. So that's embedded in long-term thinking that we certainly have. And then the final uh performance metric is on page twenty, we take all the same data. We put it into three-year rolling cycles. So from the right, you can see it's three years ending back at three thou- or. Two, two thousand eighteen, and the far left is that most current time period. And again, the same type of underperformance. Against the target with the exception of these last three years, where again, we outperformed by that two basis points. So consistently missing the uh, keeping up with the target. Let me show you the chart I mentioned when we incorporate risk. This is page twenty-three. We call this a risk return or scatter chart. Let me look at the, the five-year. So you can see on the horizontal axis, we're looking at risk using standard deviation. And then on the vertical are returns. And again, five years ending on March thirty-first. And we have four quadrants. You see all those dots? There was the two hundred and twenty-four other portfolios in that, that peer universe. And we are sitting in that bottom right quadrant, which is where we do not want to be. As you can see, we have lower performance than the median return. And we have higher volatility. We want to get above the return line and in the long run, get up in the upper left. Won't happen overnight, but that is a long-term. Target. It's a combination of asset allocation, manager selection that will provide us the tools to migrate. We uh, if this is a Catholic organization, John will probably cringe at this. We always use this, remember Catholic clients. The bottom right, you're in hell, upper left, you're in heaven. So we've got uh. Some prayers to put forth, but also the tools to. Address this underperformance and. Get a better handle on risk and return. Any questions on that chart?
I do just want, I want us to be mindful of the time. We got about twenty-five minutes. So I, I think we're going over to the recommendations at this point. Now, is that right?
That would be preferable.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay.
So John, you're gonna start with the asset allocation.
Sure. So uh, if we go to the, the um. The deck with the portfolio allocation recommendations. Last quarter, we showed you um what we were proposing relative to making some shifts in the. Asset allocation on the left-hand column that says Saint Mary's Library, that's uh the current um allocation. And the proposed is where we were attempting to simplify some of the um.
Hold on a second. Uh, could you pause for a moment? We're trying to find the documents.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not the same one. You've got it. There were five doc-. Documents, you would have to go to another document entirely.
Portfolio allocation recommendations.
After page sixty-nine, we go at sixty-nine and it's the next.
Ah, okay. I see. So you put this all together in one contiguous deck. Good.
The page seventy-one is a glossary and it's, it would be technically page seventy-three. Yeah.
I, I think we're caught up at this point.
Great. So this page here, the title is to propose strategic allocation, Saint Mary's County Library. And. The left column is the, this is what we, the page we had shown you last quarter. Where we showed the Saint Mary's County Library, Saint Mary's Library is the current asset allocation. This mirrors uh exactly what we had shown you back in the performance report. We had that horizontal bar chart and. The different asset allocations uh, so you know, for example, the. The emerging versus the international, the developed U S equity. Yeah, so. In what we're proposing is, and we proposed this last quarter, was to um eliminate the U S REITs. Eliminate the emerging market equity, eliminate high yield and tips and allocate them. Um, from the left-hand column among the different existing asset classes. So. U S REITs primarily went into the um small and mid-cap U S equity. Um, the emerging market equity went into the developed U S equity or international equity. And then core plus fixed income absorbed the high yield and the tips. Because managers typically are going to be allocating among them if they feel it's more appropriate to do. So with that, if we go to the next page titled implementation steps. Um, that first bullet point reflects what I just told you. Um, you know, making the move between the uh, the different um. Um, uh, different asset classes and selling some of the existing managers. So. We want to sell the Schwab U S REIT and put that in Fuller and Thaler's behavioral small cap equity. Eliminate the merge, emerging market asset class. We're just, there's no invest, the investment manager in there, so we're going to get rid of that class. Uh, eliminate both the uh, the high yield, move it to core plus, sell the Schwab U S tips. E T F and invest the proceeds in the core plus fixed income investment fund. And so that's, that mirrors what we talked about on uh the prior page. The next steps. We want to, your large cap equity asset classes, in essence, in an index fund. Um, we would like to propose to diversify that so that it would provide a little uh less uh potential volatility. And not be exactly like the index. Um, so we would um keep the index fund in there, but. Then uh, take two-thirds of it and put one into a large cap equity growth manager. And a large cap equity value manager. Um, and so we're recommending Edgewood Management as the large cap growth manager. Coho uh as the large cap value manager, not growth manager as it reads that I just saw, apologies. Um. And we've included our search decks in there as a research material, but um, we uh, you know. We can selectively dive into some pages on there if you would like. So I'm going to pause there. And um, see if there's any questions or uh, we can. Make a uh, point out a few highlights within those uh recommendations.
There, is there a fee structure change? Um, we used Edgewood or Coho?
I'm sorry, I, I missed the first part of that uh question.
Is there a change to the fee structure if we implemented these changes?
Oh, um, yes, there would be some. So um, I can address that right there. Um. Let's see, if we look at Edgewood, um, this now. You don't necessarily have to flip your, well, in, in the deck that we had for the large cap growth manager, Edgewood would be. Um, a higher fee, their uh, their expense ratio is one percent. Um, if we look at, and I'll look at Coho. Um, their fund is seventy-nine basis points, point, zero point seven nine percent. So it will be higher, but we're, what we did do in the um. In the, uh, and I apologize because I don't know the page number that you've got, but I'm going to um. Take a look here, I believe. What we put in for. Here we go. Um, so in the large cap growth, um. Um, head book on page six, we have a chart that shows the excess returns versus the Russell one thousand growth index of the. Three managers over time. Edgewood has um, you know, the. Of the three managers that we were looking at and that we use with our clients, Edgewood has the best. Average excess return over um, you know, over the benchmark. And that's net of, uh, this was growth of fees. So if you were to take their fee of one percent off. Um, for example, the three-year uh shows goes from a two point two percent average. Um, excess return to a one point two percent excess return. So um, looking at it net of fees, the um manager is still. It has the best uh net of fee excess return experience over the index. And, and the same way with Coho when we looked at theirs as well. Is that helpful to answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Um, the other thing we wanted to talk about relative to um, you know, Edgewood and Coho is. Both of those managers are not like the S and P five hundred index. Um, so if I look at, um, there's a page in the growth manager search, it's actually. It was the fourth page into it, and I apologize, I don't know what your numbering system is, but um. You know, the mem- the, right now in the market, um, especially this year. You know, the, the top ten um names in the S and P five hundred. Are the lion, are, represent the lion's share of the performance. Um, and. Uh, you know, we've looked at the membership of the top ten S and P five hundred companies. Over, you know, different ten-year periods. The top ten of the S and P five hundred in twenty twenty. Was not the same uh members back in two, two thousand ten. And if you go back to two thousand, the companies that were in there are not um. You know, not the same ones that are in there today. Today, the top members are companies like Microsoft and Amazon and Alphabet. Um, and, you know, so when we, we look at man, a manager. Uh, the two managers that we're proposing for your portfolio are going to look. Um, much different in terms of their weighting of their portfolio uh with the names that they hold. So um, you know, I think that Edgewood has a thirty-stock portfolio typically. And, you know, the, the uh, they're the only one, they have a small, much smaller percentage of Microsoft, but. They don't hold Amazon, they don't hold Alphabet. Um, they don't hold Apple. Uh, so they're a growth, they don't hold Meta, which is Facebook. They're a growth manager, but you know, they're looking at who, who the future growers are going to be. In the index and not necessarily uh, you know, the, the um, you know, the. The biggest grower, the biggest names in a benchmark. And they're also looking, they have a value discipline too with that. Uh, where they don't want to pay too much, uh, you know, buy high, so to speak. With the companies that they hold. And the same goes for Coho. Um, and their, their, their process makes them very defensive. In that uh, when there's a down market episode, they don't um. They don't lose as much as the market. They hold up very well and they're protective on that. Um. I'm going to stop there and. Al, did you, anything that you wanted to touch on with these two managers?
I think in a good summary, John, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Just jump to our scatter charts and compare the two, because this is part of a portfolio construction. The diversification aspects of managers that operate differently in different markets.
Yes, so yeah, within each of our um. Within each of our decks, there are on. Uh, there is a page that shows a scatter chart with the man, the ten-year risk return scatter chart. And right now I have on the screen uh, the large cap growth mutual fund search and the ten-year risk return scatter chart. Al?
As you can see, this. Aligns with our conversation, the scatter chart we have for total portfolio. That Edgewood sits in that higher volatility, higher return. We take on that higher standard deviation, but certainly have been compensated for that. Added volatility o- over time. And John, if you can, can jump to the value, just visually to put Coho in perspective.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
I'm looking at William Blair. And, you know, on, on this ten-year risk return scatter chart on page eleven. They're in that nice, high-return, low-risk category. I look at their expense ratio on page two, they charge less than Edgewood does. What's, why not William Blair? And I guess as a related question. Um, do you all have any kind of financial relationship with Edgewood or Coho?
No.
That would kind of incentivize you to point us in their direction versus somebody else?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Um, so a hundred percent of our income comes from the fee that we charge clients. We do not have any um, you know, uh, commission or anything like that with any other. Um, any other manager or the other firm. So, you know, we have to, we, we, we have to eat what we uh, what we bake, so to speak. And so. I, I think, so since you're looking at this, if you could look at page six. Um, and what we did in page six, uh, the. For the per, uh, and I'm sorry, I don't know who asked the question, but you're looking at that deck. If you look, what we did was we looked at um, you know, ten-year periods. Uh, going back, uh, or sorry, we looked at excess returns for um, a number of periods going back at least. Um, you know, ten or more periods to look at the average excess return. Of each of these managers over the benchmark. So um, you know, that scatter chart that we're looking at is a nice picture, but it's just one point in time. What we did was we looked at, um, you know, for these funds. The table that uh, that we looked at was at least twenty ten-year periods where we measured. How each manager had, what their average, what their return was over the benchmark in each of those twenty ten-year periods. And that's the, that's what this table shows here. In the gray, you can see what the average excess return was for Edgewood. J P Morgan and William Blair. And Edgewood, over those ten-year periods, had um, the, the highest um excess return. Now. This is gross of fee, so you know, we would want to subtract in, in Edgewood's case, you know, one percent. From each of that. Um, and Blair, which had. Uh, their fee of ninety basis points, so only ten basis point difference. Um, if you subtract, if you subtract or that fee from their average. If you subtract, if you subtract that fee from their average excess return. They're mostly negative, they do not beat the benchmark over time. So.
Thank you, I appreciate you unpacking that.
Thank you. And I'm happy that I was able to explain it, that somebody could understand it.
We go back to what we see as page eleven for a second. Which is the circle and all these different layers coming into it. What are the Calan large cap growth mutual funds, is that? I won't even try, what what is it? Is it a fund itself?
Oh, the mutual funds? Oh, that is. Yeah, the Calan growth mutual funds is a peer group. Of of. At least a hundred or so large cap growth mutual funds. And so.
It's a fund of funds.
Well, it's no, it's not a fund of funds, the the it's. Well, yeah, in essence, it is a fund of funds, it's the. When you put all of the other competitors together in a peer group, how do they stack out in terms of? The returns, just like when we compare your. Total fund in the performance report, and we saw that there were. You know, two hundred and ninety. You know, defined benefit pension funds in that peer group. In this case, we're looking at a peer group of. You know, at least a hundred large cap growth mutual funds. And what these bars show is, you know, the the spread of. The performance. And so. You can see on any one of the pages in the peer group there, you know. Some what the spread of their returns was from the tenth percentile to the ninetieth percentile.
But Calan represents the bullseye for several hundred funds of like type. And that's why it's at the center of the intersection, vertical, horizontal.
Well, that's, yeah, those are the members of the peer group, right, this is the. The 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 bullseye of the fifty fifty point, if you will, of. You know, all the members of that peer group, we. Didn't want to clutter up the page with all the dots. Okay. Al, anything else? That you wanted to say?
I might, if we can take a few more minutes, just go back to the value to, we've got the. The Edgewood story. Higher volatility. More risk in down markets, and we matched up Coho. Which has what drives their performance is doing better in down markets. So John, I'm gonna go back to the calendar year to start that. Just to put that in real perspective for everybody.
That's so we're looking at the, in the large cap value mutual fund search, there's a calendar year page. Showing calendar year returns. And Al?
So you can see the red.
Into the next slide. Large cap value mutual fund. Okay, we're good to go.
So you can see with our color coding, we have three calendar years where we have red ink for. Returns for the peer universe for the indices. If you look at Coho. Last year, it lost two point nine percent. You can see down below the Russell. One thousand value lost seven and a half, the median above lost five point six. They plot in a twenty nine percentile. So everybody had red ink, but they had less, which is this down market. Protection. Two thousand eighteen, we all remember the fourth quarter, similar dynamic. They lost three or round to four, outperformed by about five hundred basis points, the median and the index. And they're up in the ninth percentile, and then finally two thousand fifteen. They plot also in the ninth percentile. So that is a type of historical. Information that we were looking to. Have the fund represent, and these are expectations, so our expectations for Coho, they'll hold up. Better in down markets. One more page, John, to ten. Get into some of the statistics that. Take that type of annualized data. And let me start with standard deviation.
And and for the committees, this is the seven year risk statistics page. Our page number was ten. And it was two pages beyond the calendar year. Page. Okay.
And you'll see, no surprise, so Coho standard deviation of fourteen. The median fund is at eighteen. The index at seventeen. And it's actually got the bar chart, it's less volatile by standard deviation, and ninety nine percent of the funds. And that correlates the very last column. So here's our down market statistic. This is a seven year chart. The bogey is the Russell one thousand value at the bottom, which is one hundred. And you see Coho comes in at a seventy nine. In a simplified example, if that index went down ten percent over the last seven years. Coho went down seven point nine, so captured less in the down markets. And that helps in that whole control process, and then if we look at. Risk efficiency. And the sharp ratio, which really takes the seven year performance, the standard deviation, and asks the questions for. The seven year return we received. And how much volatility we were exposed to using standard deviation. Were we properly compensated? And you'll see they're up in the eleventh percentile where, I'm sorry. The eleventh percentile, where first is best. And that leads to the scatter chart, which is the next page, where we started, where they're well to the left of our. Crossing point. So they're right with average return, but with a lot less volatility. And that complements the risk we're taking, certainly with. Edgewood, which plots somewhat similarly to Dodge and Cox. In the in the growth chart we just seen, that's the part of portfolio building. We want to have a manager that will. Add value in down markets. Before well enough for up markets where we can. Not lose ground. And the other manager takes more risk for more return, and as markets rotate. We want to have the diversification that we participate in up markets and down markets. Let me stop there because it's a lot of data, we're going fairly quickly. Michael, we're out of time, but we want to try to quickly hit the core income. That's simply a. An enhancement over the Met West. We think we get better.
Let me ask my board how they are feeling about this, do you mind going about another ten minutes and hearing a final recommendation?
Yes, yeah, we can stick with. You know, maybe looking at the growth and value and see what you think about that.
All right. But let's continue.
Sure.
So yes, please, please continue for now.
Okay. Al. Dodging the. Core plus.
Dodge and Cox, yes.
Yes.
Yes. What page would you like us to go to?
Let's start. Be. If I my package, just so I can go along with what we're doing.
Sure, well. You know, I'll look at page four.
Performance, and let me back up, John, just.
Can I ask a question? I, there was nothing in the summary about a new fixed income investment manager search. So how does this, how does this entire piece fit into the puzzle?
Yes, so Met West has had more volatile returns than we would like.
And they're the ones we're using now, correct?
Correct, they're the ones you're using now. So what we would like to do is propose a replacement for them. To help kind of. Take the portfolio volatility, especially because it's thirty five percent of your. Total fund. To take the volatility of your performance down a little bit. By using. Dodge and Cox. And we have some charts in here to show that how their performance pattern. Looks compared to Met West and Loomis Sales Core Plus Fixed Income.
I'll do this for just a couple pages again, since we're on borrowed time. Just the difference in performance, the Met West is A on our chart. If we go out for the last ten years. Dodge and Cox is B, you can see the plotting with that West forty third percentile. Dodge and Cock up in the sixth percentile. Work your way all the way across Dodge and Cox's. Substantial outperformance over all time periods, so it's a, it's an upgrade. For a fund that we think has better long term. Opportunity. And I think our scatter chart. An easy way to sum up. The difference in.
Our our page nine.
So you can see from a standard deviation perspective. Dodge and Cox has a slightly lower level of standard deviation, so. Lower risk. And you could see we certainly pick up. Substantial performance, outperformance, and this is for the full ten years. Full market cycle. And. Again, I think it's a more efficient way. And we are folding in. The high yield. The tips. Into this fund, Dodge and Cox, we think has a. With their their depth and size, they have. All the sub teams, they have a high yield team, a tips team, you just think we get a. Higher probability of the outcome we're looking for. Without taking out any further risk, as you can see. Any questions? I know it's quick.
So I think now we as a board have to decide. How we feel about these recommendations, if we want to move forward with them, and that's another question that we need to figure out.
That is correct.
The first, the first thing is, if we like their recommendations. And and let's skip over their specific funds for a minute. They're talking about a different allocation. We will need to first of all revise and then adopt a new investment policy statement. And then work recommendations into that structure. Well, we had REITs, we had tips. Actually, we weren't using them, they're in the IPS.
I think we need to review the policy statement to see if we would have to change anything, right, or. Does the policy statement grant us the flexibility to make these kinds of changes as needed?
I doubt that very much, the policy statement is a document of this is how we want things to look out. If we want to go some different direction, like abandoning real estate. Or high yield, whatever, we have to have a policy statement that corresponds to what we want to see done.
Right, and and what we can do. If this, you know, or if this is what you would like to do, we can. Come to the next meeting with the revised breadline. Draft that you could. Approve.
Other questions or comments? John, are you good?
Talking to me, yeah, I'm fine with waiting until we get the. The the statement for, and then looking at it for the next meeting.
Well, I think that we as a board have some more talking to do, for sure, but I think. Are we ready to release our guests to go about their day? Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, and apologies for the time, but thanks so much for a few extra minutes, and I hope the rest of your meeting goes well, we'll see.
That was, that was necessary, thank you so much for spending some extra time with us, and next month, we will be ready to make a decision.
All right, wonderful.
Good.
Take care.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a ten minute break to clear people's brains? I'm about to say that, Michael, so let me do that. We can entertain a motion for a. Ten minute break.
John moved.
Second, all in favor? Any posers abstained? Nope, okay, see you in ten minutes.
I agree with Judith a hundred percent. This is a hundred pages of which we really only needed six. So at the very least, their communication strategy is failing. And uh I mean, with with John's double checking the numbers against a a known entity like Morningstar, I feel like it's it's possibly time to reevaluate this relationship. And I think also revising the um IPS should be a high priority for us if we're finding that following that strategy is not serving the needs of the OPAM.
I agree that this amount of information is just, it almost looks like they're giving it to us to like a smoke and mirrors kind of thing.
Exactly.
I didn't think there was any need for all of this. It was too much of of this stuff.
How how many minutes did they actually talk about our funds? This one page? How many minutes?
I may maybe I'm a babe in the woods here. I appreciated it, right? To me, they were showing their work. I thought that they had to set the table to explain all of these pieces, right? We are, we are not financial experts. They have expertise that we do not collectively. I don't have it individually. This is not my field. So I appreciated them showing the work. Um I don't know when they sent this information to Michael. We got it a few days ago.
It was Monday.
It was Monday. Okay.
Um and I shared that out, oh, I'm sorry, uh Tuesday, um because I remember saying I've got to get to this for the next day. So I sent it out as pretty much as soon as I saw it.
Sure.
Um and you know, we printed the board pack. It's early, but it's certainly a lot to get through.
Yes.
It took me some time.
Okay.
The last time we saw them on the screen, one of our concerns was the delay in which you were getting information. So this is March thirty one cutoff on the paper. Here we are in the second half of May. And they said, oh, well, we produce all that stuff. That's unlike being called earlier that they rely on outside vendors. Sure, we can shorten that for you because all of that other stuff is produced by us. I didn't see that happening. I'm not blaming you.
Yeah, well, in the in the essence of uh moving forward, I just want to ask is where we are right now formulating some questions for them, looking at the investment strategy? And then at some point continuing the conversation about who should be managing this this uh this account? Is is that we're kind of where we are right now?
Yeah, I think we should draft some um questions for them directly, see how they're going to answer it, and see how many more, you know, smoke screens are going to pop up. Sorry, that's what I was looking for. I'm not a financial expert in looking at all this. It's like okay, that the only thing I understand are the um couple of the charts. That's about it.
Well, here's the problem. I think these charts are kind of cool, but I'm coming as a retiree from the industry. The problem is taking all those different data points across multiple recommendations and having sort having them sort out into a coherent recommendation. That's why I went, I gave up. I went to Morningstar.
It's the communications that's lacking. If John can't interpret those charts, two hundred and fifty.
Oh, I can, but I think they don't.
Well.
Why should you?
I know, but it helps us, but it helps us understand their rationale, and these are the professionals we've hired for their expertise, right? And so when we come up with these questions, we, I think it's important that we know where they're coming from so that we know, do we trust them or not?
Well, let me follow that one. Asset Strategies has with us for years, and I have taken every year's performance and figured out a percentage year by year, whether we were above or below the target. Right? And all those years on the upside, they only beat the target one time. On the downside, they beat the target one time, and so either less down and everybody the target. It can be down.
So it's hard. Right, they just said, yes.
And all those other years, looking on a percentage basis, we were down.
So John, can you please draft some written questions that we can send them to get their responses?
John, are you letting me evaluate our relationship with Asset Strategies?
Yeah, we've had that on the
Okay. Like is that?
And it's a um it's a discussion item for today, but I unfortunately I don't think we're going to get time for it. But um we re-upped with asset strategy for a year and but we've got a thirty day escape from them. So if this board at some point decides that's not who they want to manage the fund, and and John has in fact been looking for alternatives for some time now, then we are able to do that quickly. Um so I think our action item now is please forward questions to me and I will get them to Asset Strategies and you may and copy you and you may see their replies to that.
Well, they made the offer, but the first thing on our mind is, what is our investment policy? Without that, everything is immaterial because whoever whoever we're using each portfolio, you can tell me with the IPOs.
And that is our internal investment policy, right? So we have that.
How how often do we update that?
Once in my two or three.
And it shouldn't need to be updated. I couldn't think terribly long. I I just said, I I've seen their package before. I think it's um personally kind of overwhelming, and I I almost question their tactics dumping an enormous amount of data on us that's frankly kind of irrelevant. I'm like, we're the customer. I want them to address our mission, our needs, our purpose with a personalized investment strategy plan. Bringing in two other fund managers is shocking to me for a very small fund of one point two million dollars. That's a small fund that one person couldn't manage this part time. Bring it. I just question where are they going with this? It seems to be an overly complex reach and a lot of data that is a little distracting to the for the conversation is, do we have the right um fund manager? And where are we going? What's the purpose of this fund? And where are we going with it? And we have a fund manager that's going to address our individualized needs. When I see that the the balance um and the asset allocation, the actual versus the target, how often do they come back to us and say, here's your target asset? So what we set for our allocations, it's become skewed, as happens in every market because things grow at different rates, and we need to adjust with your permission. We're adjusting current funds. Are we adjusting incoming funds? Where where's that conversation? How often does that happen? They know it's out of balance. I didn't hear an offer to adjust it.
Let me help with that. In the IPS, there is a swing. So if you're right in the middle, you're on track, but you can be above or below. Otherwise, you're looking at rebalancing every other week because of what the market does.
Absolutely. No, I wouldn't say it's it may be quarterly, it may be semi annually, you know, not every week. The ranges I I find are kind of huge, twenty point from some degree, twenty point range for your for your sixteen to thirty six percent. That's an enormous range, but personally, I think I'm I may not know what I'm talking about here, but but where is the personal attention to our funds and the phone call or email saying it's time for an asset relocation?
We have never, to my knowledge, two and a half years, seen them come to us and say, this fund that you have is under performing. Let's put them on a watch list. Maybe we've been lucky. Maybe nobody has depth or sunk to that depth. I don't know.
I just find this to be an overly complex reach for a one point seven million dollar fund. It's it just seems, and to I kind of find the the dump of data a little a little irritating. It's not addressing us. We are Saint Mary's Day Library Board, OPEV. That's who we are. Address our needs.
Hold on, John, if I'd like to get some other voices in the room too, like Dorothy, Sharon, Treta, John, do you have any thoughts or reactions or questions?
I agree with Judith a hundred percent. This is a hundred pages of which we really only needed six. So at the very least, their communication strategy is failing. And uh I mean, with with John's double checking the numbers against a a known entity like Morningstar, I feel like it's it's possibly time to reevaluate this relationship. And I think also revising the um IPS should be a high priority for us if we're finding that following that strategy is not serving the needs of the OPAM.
I agree that that this amount of information is just, it almost looks like they're giving it to us to like a smoke and mirrors kind of thing.
Exactly.
I agree also with a lot of things. I didn't think there was any need for all of this. It's just, it was too much of of this stuff.
How how many minutes did they actually talk about our funds? This one page? How many minutes of that hour?
I may maybe I'm a babe in the woods here. I appreciated it, right? To me, they were showing their work. I thought that they had to set the table to explain all of these pieces, right? We are, we are not financial experts. They have expertise that we do not collectively. I don't have it individually. This is not my field. So I appreciated them showing the work. Um I don't know when they sent this information to Michael. We got it a few days ago.
It was Monday.
It was Monday. Okay.
Um and I shared that out, oh, I'm sorry, uh Tuesday, um because I remember saying I've got to get to this for the next day. So I sent it out as pretty much as soon as I saw it.
Sure.
Um and you know, we printed the board pack. It's early, but it's certainly a lot to get through.
Yes.
It took me some time.
Okay.
The last time we saw them on the screen, one of our concerns was the delay in which you were getting information. So this is March thirty one cutoff on the paper. Here we are in the second half of May. And they said, oh, well, we produce all that stuff. That's unlike being called earlier that they rely on outside vendors. Sure, we can shorten that for you because all of that other stuff is produced by us. I didn't see that happening. I'm not blaming you.
Yeah, well, well, in the in the essence of uh moving forward, I just want to ask is where we are right now formulating some questions for them, looking at the investment strategy? And then at some point continuing the conversation about who should be managing this this uh this account? Is is that we're kind of where we are right now?
Yeah, I think we should draft some um questions for them directly, see how they're going to answer it, and see how many more, you know, smoke screens are going to pop up. Sorry, that's what I was looking for. I mean, I'm not a financial expert in looking at all this. It's like okay, that the only thing I understand are the um couple of the charts. That's about it.
Well, here's the problem. I think these charts are kind of cool, but I'm coming as a retiree from the industry. The problem is taking all those different data points across multiple recommendations and having sort having them sort out into a coherent recommendation. That's why I went, I gave up. I went to Morningstar.
It's the communications that's lacking. If John can't interpret those charts, two hundred and fifty.
Right.
Well.
I know, but it's it's not John's job to
They may I suggest this then formulate your questions. And when we send them, and happy to copy all of you on any communication with them, we just say, come back to us with a ten minute presentation justifying what you want compared to Morningstar.
And I will say for communication, I mean, they've showed up at every meeting we've asked them to, right? Like, they're here. And if we are not asking them questions, we can't blame them for not answering them.
It's a little bit like blaming the students for a bad teacher.
Oh, so.
Um they are the teachers in this case. They should be able to explain it succinctly in a way that we understand and give us the right information. And if we're walking away with questions that we don't even know what they are.
Yes, but if we're also saying now that we don't understand the material that they were presenting to us, like we have responsibility to ask them during the presentation as they hit the brakes, I don't get this graph, right? I mean, these graphs with all the boxes, I was like, what is going on here? And then somebody asked a question that helped me like put the pieces together between the chart and the graph, you know what I mean? Like, we we need to be vocal and asking them what's on our mind.
But when they're presenting all this information, it's just kind of stacking on top of it. It it's hard to formulate questions because you're trying to digest what they're saying. So it's hard to even think of what question should I ask? And if I look a little bit harder, can I figure it out myself? That's just how I was.
Also, I mean, I don't want to speak for the group, and I could have said to them, I want to get rid of ninety percent of this. I don't want to see this anymore. That's my, I can't say that to them. That's a group decision. But that's what I want to say going forward. I don't, we don't want to see this anymore. We want to see our funds and your recommendations for our funds. And how you're going to do a better job in the future.
Let's start by sharing the current IPS with everybody.
Mm hmm.
And that will explain how we got tips and real estate in as asset classes. They weren't in there before. It's the most recent iteration. Put them on there. It'll show the percentages. It'll show the spread, the swing that was allowable. That's where we're starting from. That's the document we're starting. We can ask them for one. I've got one in my computer. In a different direction, but I'll throw that on the table.
Well, we already have one, right? For
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so we'll we'll review that and we will formulate questions for them, and let's see what they come back with and how we feel about it.
But are we um are we going to or consider going to looking at other investment strategies? Maybe this can be a multi-pronged effect. We can give them questions, but that's only, that's next month. We need to look at the IPS. But are we are we considering going with somebody else? And and if so, do we start looking around? Maybe other agencies in the county use other um then they're done that. You did give us something from Edward Jones when I first got on board.
And the one the county is using is twice the cost.
Okay, that's why you look around.
So um we we have been investigating this and and that happened before you won the board, so you wouldn't, of course, understand that. So thanks for asking that question. Um we we have been considering somebody else, and it's just a question of how to do that. And that's why we built in a a thirty day um option to leave this firm. Um I I I think I need to caution you against acting too much outside of this meeting. Um because all your actions have to be in public. So we may have to tell them
Um, because I remember saying, I've got to get to this by the next day. So I sent it out as pretty much as soon as I saw it.
Sure. Much appreciated.
And, you know, we printed the board pack. It's early, but it's certainly a lot to get through.
Okay.
The last time we saw them on the screen, one of our concerns was the delay in which you were getting information. So this is March thirty-one cutoff on the paper. Here we are in the second half of May. And they said, oh, well, we produce all that stuff. That's unlike being called earlier that they rely on outside vendors. Sure, we can shorten that for you because all of that other stuff is produced by us. I didn't see that happening. I'm not blaming you.
Well, in the, in the essence of moving forward, I just want to ask. Is where we are right now, formulating some questions for them, looking at the investment strategy? And then at some point, continuing the conversation about who should be managing this, this uh, this account. Is is that we're kind of where we are right now?
Yeah, I think we should draft some um questions for them directly, see how they're going to answer it and. See how many more, you know, smoke screens are going to put up. Sorry, that's what I was looking for. I'm not a financial expert and looking at all this, it's like. That the only thing I understand are the um couple of the charts, that's about it.
Well, here's the problem. I think these charts are kind of cool, but I'm coming as a retiree from the industry. The problem is taking all those different data points across multiple recommendations. And having sort having them sort out into a coherent recommendation. That's why I went, I gave up, I went to Morningstar.
It's the communications that's lacking. If John can't interpret those charts. Right.
Well.
I know, but it's it's not John's job to.
May I suggest this then formulate your questions? And when we send them and happy to copy all of you on any communication with them. We just say, come back to us with a ten minute presentation justifying what you want compared to Morningstar.
And I will say for communication, I mean, they've showed up at every meeting we've asked them to, right? Like, they're here. And if we are not asking them questions, we can't blame them for not answering them.
It's a little bit like blaming the students for a bad teacher.
Oh, so.
Um, they are the teachers in this case. They should be able to explain it succinctly in a way that we understand. And give us the right information. And if we're walking away with questions that we don't even know what they are.
Yes, but if we're also saying now that we don't understand the material that they were presenting to us, like, we have responsibility to ask them. During the presentation, as they hit the brakes, I don't get this graph, right? I mean, these graphs with all the boxes, I was like, what is going on here? And then somebody asked a question that helped me like put the pieces together between the chart and the graph, you know what I mean? Like, we we need to be vocal and asking them what's on our mind.
But when they're presenting all this information, it's just kind of stacking on top of it. It it's hard to formulate questions because you're trying to digest what they're saying. So it's hard to even think of what question should I ask? And if I look a little bit harder, can I figure it out myself? That's just how I.
Also, I mean, I don't want to speak for the group, and I could have said to them, I want to get rid of ninety percent of this. I don't want to see this anymore. That's my, I can't say that to them. That's a group decision. But that's what I'm saying, going forward, I don't, we don't want to see this anymore. We want to see our funds and your recommendations for our funds. How you're going to do a better job in the future.
Let's start by sharing the current IPS with everybody. And that will explain how we got tips and real estate in as asset classes. They weren't in there before, the most recent iteration. Put them on there, it'll show the percentages, it'll show the spread, the swing that was allowable. That's where we're starting from, that's the document we're starting. We can ask them for one, I've got one in my computer. Direction, but I'll throw that on the table.
Well, we already have one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll review that and we will formulate questions for them. And let's see what they come back with and how we feel about it.
But are we? Are we going to or consider going to looking at other investment strategies? Maybe this can be a multi-pronged effect. We can give them questions, but that's only, that's next month. We need to look at the IPS. But are we, are we considering going with somebody else? And and if so, do we start looking around? Maybe other agencies in the county, use other. You did give us something from Edward Jones when I first got on board.
And the one the county is using is twice the cost.
Okay, that's why you look around.
Yeah, so um, we we have been investigating this and and that happened before you won the board, so you wouldn't, of course, understand that. So thanks for asking that question. Um, we, we have been considering somebody else. And it's just a question of how to do that. And that's why we built in a thirty day. Um, option to leave this firm. Um, I, I, I think I need to caution you against. Acting too much outside of this meeting, um, because all your actions have to be in public. So we may have to tell them. Don't meet with us next month and you can all individually formulate something. But you need to come up with that together in a meeting in order to fulfill your function as a public forum. So for next month, please uh bring your questions and recommendations. And I I certainly think that they'll listen to, we don't want everything. Just give us a ten minute recommendation. And if we've got further questions, we can take them to you. Um, but I I do think that might have to be the way you go as my recommendation, since you are having to. Conduct your business in public.
That's a good point. Okay. All right.
So we'll put that as a talking point on the agenda for next month.
Beautiful. Like, do you want to keep rolling through the agenda here?
Sure, um, our next agenda item is the uh current budget report. And at this point, we're starting to look at it with um. Next year's budget in mind, and so I'll just briefly review a couple of the areas of concern that we are addressing next month. Later today, you will have an opportunity to look at a salary scale for next year. And you'll also have an opportunity to look at a draft budget. We don't want an approval on that draft budget for next year. We just want an approval on the salary scale. But we'll give you kind of a a sense of where we're going. Um, so for this time. If you look at the personnel services, you'll see there's four hundred fifty-one thousand dollar balance. And a monthly budget of amount of about two hundred and fifty.
What page you want?
Uh, page one of this, looks like so. And it says, monthly budget report FY twenty twenty-three at the top. Um, you'll see, so we are anticipating because of vacancy credit, that is. Times when positions aren't filled to have some money left in that fund. But it looks like we're going to have other areas where it's down. And so we anticipate being right on budget for the year, um, once everything else gets done. Um, point out to you on the next one down where it says health insurance. OPEB, there's the amount of a hundred thousand dollars budgeted, that is for pay-go, which is to say. Currently, we are taking care of all our retired employees. They pay a small percentage unless they were here for a very long time. Our fifty-year employees, they're not paying anything. It's a hundred percent covered, right? Or it's eighty-five, okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So so if you've been here a really long time, you know, as a fifty-year employee, you're not paying that much for your retirement health insurance. People who were not here so very long are paying as much as eighty-five percent on their own. But they pay a certain percentage and we pay, and that's where that money goes. Uh, about twelve thousand left for the year. By the time we pay out, there probably won't be much left there.
Do we process those claims ourselves?
Um, what do you mean, do we process them?
Claims?
Yeah.
Well, Care First does.
And how does our money get to?
Care First?
Yeah.
We.
We send them a check.
Health bill.
Okay, so the actual, the the claimant does not come to us, they cross us through.
Yeah, it's all, it's all, it's all done through the county health insurance. Yeah.
So the county, when we get money back or we have to pay. At the, at each year, that is claims that are under or over what Care First is expecting.
Uh, turn the page over to page two. Uh, an area where we're going to have to budget substantially more next year is utilities. And you'll see that we're already um overspent in some of these. And if you look at Lexington, I'm sorry, Leonard Town, you'll see electric is only sixty-nine percent and. Their water sewer and trash is only seventy-two percent and their gas is only thirty-five percent. That's because we've only got two quarters so far. And that's not our doing. The county is just slow to get us those invoices. So we're already going to be over for the year for electric and water sewer and trash. And electric's going to be the big expense, of course. Um, so next year, we're looking at how we've got to put more money into those funds. Um, if you look down at the next one, that will say operating supplies, you'll see a line for staff development at sixty-two percent. Oh, don't worry, it's going to get spent. The next one down, the next block down, circulation and program expenses, the circulation collections only at seventy-two percent. We are working on expanding as much of that as we possibly can. We're working with the selectors to cancel out any order that hasn't been filled and to reorder. The trouble with this is that the publishers, even though they say, hey, or here it is, the book doesn't always come out. So orders don't always get filled, the money's encumbered but not spent. So we have to say, well, it looks like we've spent everything. In fact, it's just encumbered. So we're working on shaking that out and making sure that we're expending as much of that as possible. Any amount that is not spent will be moved over to digital because we can spend eBooks and audiobooks. In a flash, you order them and they're, they're basically invoiced. So um those, that amount will get taken care of. Um. Over on page three. You will see that the mobile library is now a hundred percent spent out. And the only thing remaining to be spent there is fifty thousand dollars that we'll owe to tech ops. And as I told a couple of you earlier, we're having finally some progress working at the state level. Um, we've sent them several forms that I sent them as early as last June. Yes, we did, we did do that with you. Um, so we're hopeful that that fifty thousand dollars will come forward. Um, and we'll just have to make sure of it. Um, other than that, um. Look on page. Let's see, five, um, you see a block that says services and fine income. And one of them is other incomes. And what is four hundred and thirty-one dollars coming from? I mean, you get like one, one million to the budget. Um, that pri- is primarily um credit card points. When we spend on the credit card, we get some points back. So just this little, little bit of money one does not expect. Um. We will already, we think, have to spend more than sixty-two thousand dollars, in fact, have uh for the. For the fund balance to balance the budget for the year. Um, so when we look at. The budget, we need to remember that that's money we're already supposedly taking out of our fund balance to balance the budget. It's not like if we end up with, hey, a sixty thousand dollar, looks like more came in than came out. We need to remember that some of that was the fund balance. So um, most of our lines look pretty good. Um. Overall. On page six, you see Smurla actually gave us a little bit more money um for. Their share, that's because Charles didn't use all theirs and Charles very graciously said, well, give it to Saint Mary's County. So most of the things are in line, but we will have to have a large budget reconciliation. Um, at the end of the fiscal year to try to make sure that lines that go under are accounted for. We think there's going to be enough money there. Um, we don't know if we'll show a profit for the year or not profit, haha. Um, it'll just depend on what expenses come down to.
Michael, using the electric bill as an example, what happens when we get to the end of the fiscal year? And we have not gotten the electric bill that covered the year we just.
And just try to make sure that everything is actually an expense for this year is credited against this year and not moved into next year.
What about any of those bills that would sort of straddle the new year?
Try to break those down too.
Okay.
Michael, I noticed on page three, accounting and audit in the middle is underspent. Is that a, like a semi-annual? Expense that?
It won't be. So we just paid a nine thousand dollars to um our auditors. Which isn't in that line because it happened this week and I ran that on Monday. Um, plus, Asky and Asky still uh needs to charge us for both quarter. Three and four, which is January to June. So we have the Asky and Asky bill that will come in. And we'll have one more asset strategy quarter before the end of the year. So it will be spent and possibly over.
Thank you. And then on page four, I see the IT FNE is also, what, remind me what that means?
Furniture and equipment.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So for IT, it's equipment, basically. It's all new computers.
We, we try to replace the computers every three years on a rolling schedule. And the last couple of years, we actually haven't managed to do that, so we're trying to catch up as much as we can there. So that, that money will get spent too. Um, other questions about where we are?
Round numbers, what is the uh bank balance now?
Um, well, actually, um. I, I think we may not have run it off this month, but I can tell you that roughly right now. Um. The account fund balance right now is about, um. Looking at things we've already taken out of it from the last time, we're about four hundred thousand dollars.
That's the amounts GIP, not our bank, and not our PNC account.
That's the money at PNC.
That's our MLGIP account, so it's the account that um is created and shared with the cap- with the state. So our state funds are dropped into there and our grant funds are dropped into there. Um, we keep money in that account. Um, until we can pull it into our bank account to spend, we spend from our PNC account. Our PNC account is holding around. I maintain it around two fifty to three hundred. Um, and I'm pulling money in each pay period to make sure that it stays at that level.
What kind of protection do we have on that money that's with the state?
This, the same that we have with ours because it's a state entity and we're a county entity. Those are all protected fully.
Because government funds, government funds are allowed more than the two hundred fifty thousand dollar FDIC amount is protected. And we've gone over that before. And that's the answer we're getting from the state.
So um, if we have um funds left at the end of this year. Um, July, June thirtieth, by first you've got some money we haven't spent. Two thousand dollars, ten thousand, I don't know, that goes into the fund balance?
That stays in, that stays in the MGLIP account and we we can call it a fund balance if we want to. But it stays in that account. It doesn't have to go back to anybody. But so what frequently will happen with that, for example, is the last couple of years, we've gotten a healthcare re- refund, haha, from the state. Meaning we paid out more to the insurers than they were expecting. And so they give some money back. And what we often do and what the county does with it as well is say, okay, that sits in fund balance because next year we're going to have an increase in the healthcare insurance costs. So basically, we just figure that's a a son that we would say, all right, we're going to use the fund balance for this to balance the budget. So that's where some of that money might go.
So it's open to us to use in whatever way we deem appropriate. There's no restrictions on fund balance.
Hmm, well, ideally, and we're going to be taking up this later. You want at least two months. Of a rainy day fund, if we call it that, and we will, we have. Um, a little over one month. Of, to match our sort of what our monthly expenses would be in that fund. So if you look at that budget sheet, actually, what you'll see. On page. Let me find it for you here, just one second. There's a place where all the monthly budget, uh, there we go. Look at the bottom of page four. Monthly budgeted amount, we pay about three hundred fifty thousand dollars a. Month for the library. So if we've got about four hundred thousand sitting in what I mean, we've got a little over one month's worth of expenses. And that's a good thing to have because there's times when either the state. Or the county don't give us the money that's due on a regular basis on time. So we definitely want to have at least three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars sitting around.
No, no, that's my question, but there's no legal restriction on that, on those funds.
No. No, um, we don't have to, you know, I, it's just a good practice, but there's no, you have to use this for. Or that other than when we get grant funding, the grant funding has to go to something related to the grant.
And it has a time.
Yes, the grant cycle is going to be ending on June thirtieth. And we will have spent pretty much everything.
Thank you.
Well, now something a lot more fun. Um, it is time to take a look at our mobile library presentation. And uh, we have uh our mobile librarians uh and mobile outreach team here. And that is Sandy and Rosa, so please take it away.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for giving us a little time this morning to speak with you about the mobile library. Um. Sure. All right, so we're very excited about the opportunity to bring library services and resources directly to the community. With the mobile library serving as the fourth location within the Saint Mary's County Library System. We will truly have the ability to serve everyone, regardless of any barriers to access that they may have. Uh, it's a wonderful chance to meet community needs, build new partnerships and have a positive impact throughout the entire county. Um, to find the most effective ways to operate the mobile library, we've reached out to various organizations. Throughout the state of Maryland, we visited the Howard County and Baltimore County Public Library System. We've ridden along with Baltimore and Calvert County as they conducted a day of stops. We've established a monthly meeting with the mobile services team. From both Charles County and Calvert County where we meet to discuss best practices. We've also conducted interviews with many community contacts and stakeholders to learn more about those areas of the community. Where we might have the most.
So we just wanted to go through a brief overview of our budget. So this is the current fiscal years and the current costs that we've been talking about all this year. The vehicle cost total was ended up being four hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, so two hundred forty thousand nine hundred was state grant funded. The foundation funded sixty thousand, the FOL funded four thousand. And then we are hoping for that Crosby grant of fifty thousand and it is all covered. That would be our total. Um, you can see what else we bought this year. We have our two laptops, our mobile library books and materials. Um, the electrical outlet that will be paid for by the county. Um, these are all items that were grant funded. So the total mobile, mobile library grant and donation funding was three hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred dollars there. So all of that was funded by grants and donations.
Does that three fifty-five number include the Crosby grant?
Yes.
So just on the vehi- Call, we're going to be, even with Crosby, about forty-five and for about forty-nine thousand short.
Which we paid, we paid with the. Um, we paid with the fund balance that you approved last month of fifty thousand dollars. You'll, it's on the budget, which I'll get to, I'll show you on the next slide. Yep. So just a reminder, so that three hun- we, mobile grant so far, grant and donations paid three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for us. So these are our expenses, what we have paid as a library for the mobile library. Um, we were did the remaining cost of the vehicle of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That was from the two different short um fund balance requests we've made in the last couple of months from you. The collections was thirty-four thousand eight hundred, we had IT equipment at eight thousand, we had the wrap at eleven thousand three hundred. And then. And then miscellaneous supplies for 588. So that total is 104,798 dollars that the library has paid. So when you compare those two, we paid a hundred thousand dollars and we have done donations and grants for 379,000 dollars. So in the grand scheme of things, our mobile library that the library has paid is much smaller.
Unfortunately, due to the COVID supply restrictions, um, the cost of the vehicle was substantially higher. We've got a $250,000 grant and then 50,000 capital grant. That would have covered it because the initial cost for the vehicle was about 307,000. Thousand dollars unfortunately has gotten substantially larger um, due to supply chain issues. But um, I, we're really looking forward to uh, this uh, this outreach and, and reaching a lot more of the community. And there's a lot of excitement in the community as well. Um, unfortunately, we are probably looking at a September ribbon cutting at this point. But um, we're working with the county on that. It's should be ready. It could, it might have been ready by, by July. Um, but people are in vacation in July and August often. We wanted a month where we'd have a lot of folks here in county to come to that ribbon cutting.
So the next section there is the anticipated annual cost for next year. This is what you'll see in the budget for FY24. We may make some minor changes to those supply lines, but for the most part, this is what we think it will be. Um, the fuel we're going to budget $10,000, maintenance, we're going to budget 11,000, insurances. We're guessing between five and 10,000, supplies for 3,000 and program supplies for 4,000. So a total budget line item of 33,000 for the mobile library next fiscal year. Now, uh, maintenance is going to include everything from checkups, oil changes, tire rotations, um, waxing and washing. Sandy has done a lot of research with other counties as to those expenses, what's needed for these items and what, what is expected on how to take care of the mobile library. So we tried to anticipate that.
Right. With the wrap, is there a special um, wash for it? You don't run through the car wash, I imagine.
The size of the vehicle does make it so we have to do that differently. So, um, but yes, the wrap is um, hardy. Like it's, it should maintain itself for many years to come. Um, but we do have to be a little bit careful and make sure that we're using the appropriate things on it.
And the reason-
Does the insurance cover the contents of the mobile library or just the vehicle?
We have insurance. Uh, well, what we're looking at is insurance for the cost of the mobile library. So one of the things that we will be talking about with our insurance company and they will talk to us until we have a VIN number is whether or not um, we have other liability insurances, of course, for all three of our branches. So we'll work on them to see where that coverage will be. Um, where the inside of the vehicle will be covered, but we will get it covered.
Does the supplies line consider updates to the collection?
That will come out of our circulation budget, completely different this year, uh, in the next fiscal year. So this year was different because we were creating a whole new place. But um, next year it'll be part of our circulation budget. They'll have a line item within our circulation budget. Any other questions on the budget before we move on? Okay.
Okay. So back to the wrap. And this is um, what the truck will look like. The white truck is kind of what it will look like when it arrives to us. So it basically looks like a moving van. Um, but these are some examples of um, wrapped mobile libraries. Um, the artist we have gone with is Matthew Fleming. He does have a lot of experience with mobile libraries specifically and vehicle wraps. And his, an example of his work is that center one with like the trees and the people. Um, so ours will, we do not have initial designs yet. We're expecting those in the next week or two. Um, and then we'll be going through that process with him. He will be done well in advance of receiving the vehicle. Um, and we are going with a local company. We're going with their barefoot graphics to actually apply the wrap. Um, so we did look at a lot of different companies, both on the Eastern Shore and down here, and they came in at the most competitive price. And they do have experience with wrapping vehicles and, and we have a really good track record with using that company. Um, so we are going with those two vendors, Matthew Fleming, the artist and Barefoot Graphics to actually apply the wrap. Um, it will take about two weeks for the wrap to be applied because they have to like take off all of the handles and take off the awning and all of that to apply the wrap and then put it all back on. Um, so it is apparently kind of a big process, but they do assure us that wraps can last for many years, um, especially if we maintain them properly. Um, so are there any questions about the exterior of the wrap? I don't have pictures to show of ours yet.
Was there a competitive process to choose the artist?
We spoke with a lot of different artists. Um, all of the prices came in pretty similarly. So we kind of went with one that we liked their art. At the end of the day, uh, but we did speak to four or five different um, artists and companies. Um, could some companies provide both application and um, the artwork? And then some do, you know, one or the other. So we spoke to both types of company um, and got quotes from at least four, I mean, maybe five different um, companies. Um, and then the next part, oh. Um, this is the interior. Um, and so we do have samples. I'll pass these around in just a second. But the interior will look kind of like a little library. So it will have um, books and shelving that have kind of a lip on the end and they're kind of tilted. So the books don't fall off when you're driving. Um, there will be a workstation as you can kind of see in the back there a little bit. This is Calvert. Um, and so it's actually a little bit smaller than ours will be, but it'll look kind of similar. Um, we made a few changes. We will have a soft surface for our ceiling um, to kind of make a more cozy feel. And um, our floors will be hard surface though for spilled some foot traffic and that kind of thing, you know, rainy days will happen when the mobile library is out. Um, it will also have a bench, um, a window. It will be a very nice space. So on the one side you can see um, the material. The dark blue is the fabric that will be like on the seat, the bench, that kind of thing. Um, the wood paneling looking material is actually the walls. Um, it seems a little unconventional, but, but we actually toured a bunch of different mobile libraries and we saw this and it was beautiful. Um, so the shelving will be white and the, the walls will be kind of that wood. Um, the lighter wood, I don't know what that is, uh, wood stuff, wood veneer, um, will be kind of the cabinets. And so the cabinets will be that. And then the, the light blue color is the countertops and the speckly fab, that, that is the floor. Um, the ceiling will be kind of a really light whitish tan color. Um, it's called moonscape. Um, and so yeah, there it is. So we're really um, excited to see it all put together. But um, they had lots and lots of choices for us. We tried to pick something that would be long lasting um, and durable, but also kind of cozy and go along with the themes that we're hoping to incorporate on the exterior of the wrap, which would be very St. Mary's County. So a waterscape of some kind, including kind of our maritime history. Um, obviously a lot of literacy. Um, and we told him things, um, we sent him, you know, a bunch of tours and stuff from St. Mary's County so that he knew what kind of our landscapes and our buildings and what we look like down here. Um, and so we're really excited to see those initial drawn. Um, are there any questions about the interior?
No ship lap.
I mean, we, we've got kind of close. We did wood. But yeah, um, I guess the, the few other things that are shown in the pictures is there is a wheelchair lift. So there will be a main door that most people will enter through. There's also a wheelchair lift. Um, so there is an entrance and an exit opportunity that you could kind of go through the library. Um, if you needed to go that way, or we can have people coming in and out of one entrance. Um, and there's also the ability to take the carts up and down, um, so that the mobile librarians have in a, um, a lift basically. Cause the carts obviously are full of books and extremely heavy. So they can wheel them off and on depending on what stops they're going to make. They will have different collections.
How long has Calvert had their mobile library?
I think about two years now.
Okay. I'm thinking, I'm looking at these colors and thinking in the future, how far in the future we might want to set aside a part of the budget that is, is continually like planning to update and refinish the interior and also the wrap. Cause these things do tend to get to be, to appeal now. They may look dated in five.
Yeah. So we did our best to pick neutrals, but they will eventually become dated and also just worn out. Like we're going to have wear. Um, they did assure us that the materials that are used are, are very much for public. So they should last, but I think they were saying like the years ish, and then it's probably going to need new, you know, especially like the seating area was. Eventually fairly peel or chip.
Want to say that all of the shelving will be able to become off the cart?
Five, five of the carts will be able to come off of the, off of the vehicle. So, but the rest are actually um, a part of the vehicle itself.
Sure. That's my question would be, so if you go to perhaps like a senior center, you have, you don't have all the shelving off and someone may want to come in to what you have. And you have a lift or a wheelchair or someone who, who has mobility.
Yes. And our plan with the senior center is to offer a dual service. So for those who have an ability or are interested in coming onto the mobile library, we'll have that open for them. Uh, with one of our team members there on the vehicle to uh, take care of them. And then the other team member will be inside for a lobby stop. So we can take some of those carts with newer books, bring them in. Um, and they can also check out from here if they'd like. And we can also bring poles for them that they requested. So lots of opportunities for them to uh, have access to on the.
Is the interior navigable with the carts still in these are things like rain where you can?
Um, yes, it should be. Um, the, one of the differences that you'll see here, um, I'm not sure if this answers your question.
I was just asking if it, I'm, I'm picturing these carts being stacked in the aisles. You can't get in, you can't take them out of the train.
They are not stacked in the aisle. I will notice. They actually, they uh, have a place.
All stored inside, yes.
Okay. So then you just unhook them and bring them out. So uh, the area is clear for wheelchair use. So one of the differences here, Calvert actually has a small TV there on the ceiling. They uh, made the choice to, to not um, have it on the outside of the vehicle, but we will have a TV on the outside of our vehicle. Target audiences. So while our goal is to reach everyone, uh, we are focused on youth and early literacy, the underserved and seniors. Uh, we've established or renewed many relationships with organizations across the county, and we will be visiting many of these locations once we're on the road.
Will the schedule be published?
It will be published. Uh, we will visit each location for approximately one to two hours once a month on the same day of the month. Uh, so there will be a routine. We will also have um, community stops that will not be as regular uh, for an event like Juneteenth. If we happen to have a vehicle, you know, there might've been an opportunity for us to go there. But these are, these are the stops that we're currently considering. So as we've begun planning our collection, we've spoken to other libraries around the county, uh, or the counties to learn what they're doing. Each library location caters their collection to their customers and we're going to attempt to do the same. At the start, we're focusing on materials that correspond to the interest of our target audience. Uh, so children's books in both English and Spanish. Uh, fiction titles, both regular and large print for our seniors, young adult materials and more. Uh, and we will continually be reassessing and making changes as we become more informed of opportunities and want.
Can I clarify with the collection? Is that the, the collection is set no matter what you're stopping? Or is it going to rotate based on what the staffs are putting?
So we will have items there that um, we will have uh, children's picture books, then board books, and we have children's book. So yes, everything will be on there, but, but it can rotate. Uh, new items are moved, uh, saved and visited, they're in a lot of um, items that come out more will go in. Uh, we will rotate items based on for the year. So a day in the mobile library, we are planning to be on the road four to five days a week. Uh, at least one day will be set aside to prepare, restart and take care of paperwork and scheduling. And a typical day could be anywhere from three to five stops. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we will have our regular stop and then our community event. And each stop will have a different type of focus or service. Uh, we talked about the senior center, how we could do the dual service there. Uh, for daycares, we might have story times with a focus on early literacy skills. Uh, where a community event but might be more geared toward general resources and community. Does anybody have any questions?
So you have a different schedule then for one school event?
Well, so one of the exciting things, we've been talking to the uh, library media specialists at all of the high schools about uh, an exciting program that we learned about in Baltimore County called Library at Lunch. Uh, and it's a great way to really engage with uh, the teens because that, that has historically been an area or a group that's very hard to reach. Um, and so we will be going during the school year to visit um, the high schools at lunchtime. Uh, and try to build that rapport with our teenagers. So.
Where, where will the various audiences learn what the applicable schedules for their situation?
On that website, we will have our mobile library, just like we have a calendar of events now. We should have a calendar of mobile library stops. Uh, the other counties also have a map. So you can follow the route of the uh, local bill. I haven't spoken to Sarah about this yet, but uh, I assume we would have something similar.
So I guess you could make adjustments if there was historically no demand shown.
Yes, that, that's another thing. We will be reassessing our stop uh, periodically just to make sure that we are uh, in the place of where we are most effective.
Will you also be advertising at the places where you're stopping? I'm picturing my, my kids are in high school. They're not going to go to a website to find out when you're buying.
So we, uh, for example, with the high schools, we'll, we'll work with the media specialist for that word to, to get out within.
This is outstanding. And uh, I mean, the project itself, the mobile library is incredible. This is a great presentation. So kudos to you all. Very nice job. And I, I'd like to thank Sandy and Rosa um, for extreme flexibility. Basically leveraging something that hasn't existed, finding out best practices and making this work in our county. And so thank you so much. Much for all your work and all the supporting work that has gone into this um, is just an incredible amount. It's going to be a, a, a big leap in what we're able to offer the county. So I'm very excited to finally see it coming together. Only wanted it for seven years. So.
I'd like to suggest that not, not for this budget that we're going to be operating on. But I think we ought to start a very incremental sinking fund for the point where we do need to refurbish surfaces and things like that. If you don't anticipate five years, eight years, whatever, but let's, let's not rather jump out and bite us. Let's start putting a little bit away every year for that.
Well, um, and we may find that there's future grant funding available. Speaking of which, uh, let's look at LSTA grants for fiscal year, for this upcoming year. Those are amounts that we request from outside agencies to support operations here. Um, we're allowed three from the state and actually St. Mary's County will be able to have four if we want them because we have uh, basically what's a pass through grant for the ebook that supports the Palace app. And I'll be talking with the state on Monday about that particular grant. So we'll be applying for that one. We've got three that we're planning on applying from the state. The first is a new strategic plan. We have a strategic plan in place that was voted on by this board in February of 2020. And you might remember in March of 2020, something drastic changed about the world. And so it kind of blew that plan a little bit out of the water. Um, it is time for a new one. And about $20,000 typically brings in a vendor who will work with the library and you with community outreach and have a process by which that happens. The first strategic plan that happened when I was here, I basically just worked with the library and we did it. Um, it's a little bit um, more organized if you have a vendor to help out. So we'll be asking for that one. Um, we are looking at getting interpreters for weekly programs, sign language interpreters. We offered one program and it filled up. We think there's a higher demand there than we realized. So it's fairly expensive to get interpreters and you've got to have a regular schedule to do it. So we're going to be looking at up to $40,000, but I'm still hoping to hear back more from our programming team and our person who's a specialist in this about what exactly they want. But we will be asking to set up a regular programming schedule that will have ASL interpreters. And it's a little bit harder to provide them on an on-demand basis, but possibly some of the grant funding could go towards that. We're looking at memory labs at Charlotte Hall and Lexington Park. There is something like that here in the um, maker space, but basically these are things that allow people to bring in slides and turn them into digital files, bring in old film and bring it in, turn it into digital file. And basically anything that's kind of analog, make- And basically anything that's kind of analog, make it digital. And it can take some time to do the the conversions, and it's kind of fun to watch the machines at work, especially when it's doing a film. But both of those places do not have one, and we'd just like to be something that we're going to extend, especially up to Charlotte Hall, which Lexington Park has some special things. Leonard Town has some special things in Charlotte Hall. We don't want to look like always our poor stepchild. Um so probably fifteen thousand for that. The fifth grant that we'll be looking at is actually from Leonard Town Rotary, of which I am the incoming president. Gee, I wonder whether there might be a grant opportunity there. Lexington Park has a story walk. It's a series of posts with covers on the top that are weatherproof, and you can slip the covers of books and pages from books into it. So families will walk from station to station to station. And they can read and it gets them outside and the kids sort of like to follow along and you can, we don't and probably will not for other two locations have exercise uh that you can do there. In case we don't have one here, we do not have one at Charlotte Hall. So I'm going to ask Leonard Town Rotary um to provide uh four thousand six hundred. We'll look for a grant from Rotary just for four thousand six hundred to put a story walk out here in the front garden. And then at Charlotte Hall, the uh farmer's market is no longer there. So there's some space there that's not being used. We want to put a story walk in there too. So those are our grant proposals for the upcoming year.
Michael, are you looking at any of the private healthcare foundations or maybe an endowment to keep uh shining alive?
We will, um if we do this, want to be looking at making it sustainable. So we'll have a better idea um after one year of piloting it, what costs would be. It's probably going to be something we either have to look into or that we'll look for future grant opportunities. But if we do it one year, we don't want to lose it. So yes, we are going to have to plan for making that sustainable. And the grant proposal will have to uh sort of include our operations for continuing to do that. Um we're only we've only got about half an hour and we've got quite a bit to get through, but a couple of these we can do really fast. The asset strategy we've already looked at and it is going to be an action item of sorts um for you to prepare for next month. Uh staff day, once a year, we close to the public in December and have an all-staff day. And our proposal for this year is on December first. You are invited to staff day. We typically do a breakfast for staff there. And we have um morale um boosting things, and then there's some learning opportunities as well. So I would like you to approve, please, that closure on December first.
All right, we can entertain a motion to close on the library on December first for staff day. Or anybody want to so move that one?
So moved.
Thank you, Jura.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tressa. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any poser abstained? Motion carries.
We want to change the name of one of our manuals um from the policy and procedure manual um to St. Mary's County Library Policy Manual. And the reason why is we're going to have a separate sort of procedures manual that we want to work at that you don't have to look at yourselves. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Well, we we already have the separate manual and we get very confused about which manual we're talking about. We're just trying to clarify that.
I'll make a motion that the name of the manual is changed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I suggested we go plural with it, policies.
I think it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, I would defer to them. Folks in the trenches here. Um all all in favor of changing the name as written in the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any poser abstained? Motion carries.
Okay, let's look at the salary scale for next year, and that is what we are asking you to approve today and not the overall budget for next time. And it is a largish ledger size, which is two-sided. And the first side is the current fiscal year, which is uh I'm sorry. Um it should have been July, but in any case, this is what our salary scale is from January first through twenty twenty-three through uh July thirty, twenty twenty-three.
It's not from July, it's from January.
We we changed it. Yeah, we yeah, we did a, we changed it. So thank you. So this is what it currently looks like. And the other side is what we are proposing. And a second, when I take a look at the um the sort of draft budget with you, you'll see that um the county commissioners gave us five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars of that, so leaving about twenty thousand dollars out, has gone into suggesting this increase. And just to simplify it for you, the in fact increase for our frontline staff up through branch managers is going to be about fifteen point five percent of an increase for everybody. And obviously, the higher up you go, the kind of more the jump might be. But our effect and branch managers, when compared to Calvert and Charles, have been making substantially less as we've documented to you over the last several months. So our coordinators, um and that is several of the people in this room, Laura's, for example, the the uh marketing coordinator. Um uh Belinda is our HR and finance coordinator. Will go up fifteen percent, but there's something that's different there. And that is that they have all agreed to go two steps back. That allows people who are making less money to get more. And they will still be getting a fairly healthy increase themselves of about fifteen percent. But if we had moved, if we kept them at their current step, because of the amount, they'd be making substantially more on a percentage basis. The deputy director is exactly the same, um about a fifteen percent increase overall, but she is moving down two steps. The director is completely different. I am not taking a raise to begin the year, maybe a couple hundred dollars. I'm going down five steps. I want everybody here who has been underpaid for years to have as much money as they can possibly get. Now, I have built into the budget um a two-point-five percent step increase that you may decide you wish to allot to me in December. So I'm not, yeah. I'm not that noble. Um but that's kind of where we are in terms of what these percentage increases are. And we've given even more of the county money to this, but we've got to balance the budget. And so there are areas that are going to go up, and we'll look at that in a couple of minutes. But I do want you to consider approving this request um for a um salary scale.
Have the commissioners had their final, final meeting that all of this is?
They have not, but they're not going to be changing the five hundred and eighteen. We're not going to get any more, and they're certainly not going to cut us. That final, final meeting is next Tuesday.
They did confirm with us, though, that we were getting five hundred and eighteen.
Yeah, we 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 know that, and no matter what they do, they're not going to give us more. It would seem. We're kind of hoping, well, if you do this exercise tax, maybe we'll be more money on the table, but not, we're 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 good at five hundred and eighteen.
Can I also uh clarify something that with this, this is going to be a year of a salary scale adjustment. So no staff will get a step increase. It's a salary scale adjustment.
Yeah, we're front-loading it. So all the money that we possibly can get will go starting on July one. Now, there may be a couple of people who will get a little more for, let's say they finish their MLIS program, then often that means you move up a step. So we're trying to build a few of those in here too. But by and large, this is as much money as we can give to people as soon as we can give it based on next year's budget. Yes, it's still thirty-five hours. I wouldn't mind moving it up to forty hours if we could then find the extra money for it, but apparently some of my staff don't like that idea.
Any other questions?
I'm having, I'm having trouble understanding the chart. So are we looking at the pending approval before twenty twenty-four?
Starts on Ju- July one, uh this this it'll be July one, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, the one that's marked pending approval.
Yeah.
Grade, that column. I understand the steps. Steps come with time with grade.
Grade, grade.
Grade is the position. So for example, grade twelve, that's the director. Oh, yes. So the steps typically go up one a year. Um although um it's really dependent on what the budget is. So for example, in the year when we got two thousand dollars from the county in twenty eighteen, nobody got a step increase.
Mentioning job titles like manager or director, but I don't see that. I just see grades. So how do we know which one of those are?
So we have a sheet. I did not include it. I apologize. I probably should have. Um I did not include that sheet with this, but I know all these. So grade one, two, and three are our library assistants. Grades four and five are our librarians.
Grades four and five are librarians.
Six and seven are our assistant branch managers. Eight is all the coordinators. Ten and eleven or sorry, nine and ten are our branch managers. Eleven is the deputy director and twelve is the director.
That helps, thank you.
And to be clear, what are the percentages in the first column?
Okay, so and also um SP ones and SP two, you can see that's our security and our PTAs, which are public technology assistants, just so you know. And then we have the, of course, the minimum wage, which is our pages, which the bill passed for that to go to fifteen dollars an hour on January first of this coming year. Um as far as the percentages on the left, so that is why this is an actual salary scale adjustment also, because if you'll see that it's those percentages are different on the current one. And that is, it's basically the percent difference between uh grades from one to two, two to three, three to four, five to six. So for grade one, it's actually from minimum wage. So it's twenty-five percent over minimum wage. And so then then there's nine percent to go to two, nine percent to go to three, ten percent to go to four, and so on. Um and we just tried to even that out based on what you were moving up to. So for example, um our life, our assistant branch managers are grade six when they first start as an assistant branch manager. And they're moving up generally from a librarian position. Um and they are taking over managing all the staff in their departments at each branch. So when they went from a four or five to a six, they were only getting a six percent increase, which is not significant enough when you start a huge responsibility and they're going from non-exempt to exempt. So those are the kinds of things we tried to add to to make fairer.
And grade four, if you start for the legal requirement to have a master's degree, is that correct?
No. So librarians don't require a master's degree. They do require a bachelor's degree, and then they must take six hours of LOTTI, which is the library associate training through the state. Once they've done LOTTI or they've got their MLIS, they go to five as as a full librarian. Um they, if if they're hired with an MLIS, then we start them at a five.
So a jump in in.
It is. It's a master's in library science, but you have to have a very, I have a master's. I don't have a master's in library science. So when I was a librarian, I could only be a four, even with a master's degree. Uh all of our librarians start at grade four. They have two years to complete either a master's program or the Library Associate Training Institute, which is training that is required by the state of Maryland. So at two years after they've met that requirement, they become a grade five. The library, the actual master's degree in Maryland law is only required for the director. And depending on what library system you're you're in, you know, there's requirements for the master's degree. So like our our system, the deputy director, it's required. Um but that answers your question.
So if if there's additional uh certification taking place, do you stay in the same grade and bump a step, or do you go to another grade? And if so, what would your step be there?
So you go from grade four to grade five once you've met the certification requirement.
But if I was a four-four, would I go to a five-one?
We do not decrease them. So we find the step that gives them um as a an equal increase on the grade five level.
Okay, so they, so it's just, as as Belinda said, we didn't, no one's losing money. We find a place that's higher that would uh sort of be where they would be if they had gotten a step on the next scale.
Okay.
So uh
Scale is actually inward.
That's um for next year. Oh, that's that's the current one. That one running through July third, it should be June, June thirty, yeah, June thirty. And the next one would take place effective with the fiscal year July one.
Are we ready to entertain a motion to approve the the salary scale?
I'll make a motion to approve the salary scale.
I will second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any poser abstained? Motion carries.
Right. At this point, we've only got fifteen minutes and we do need to enter a closed session. So I will catch you up on everything else next month, and I don't think it will take us much longer than fifteen minutes. And John, you're still online, correct? Uh John, are you there? Um because Michael intends to recuse himself, and you were going to lead. John, do you hear me?
John, can you hear us?
Yeah. Is he is he chatting?
He can hear us.
Can you speak so that we can hear you?
Yeah.
Michael, not to throw too much sand in the gears, but we do not have ourselves positioned to go into a closed session.
Uh we we will. Um I'm just hoping that that John, who was going to lead that closed session, would be able to, but we are absolutely ready to, and I can guide you through the process of doing that.
Now, on on what basis are we authorized a closed session?
Uh we've announced that it's going to happen, and we just have to make a motion and do it.
Where did we announce it?
It was in the agenda.
Not the one I'm working off of. It's called New Trustee Business.
Yeah. Seven, eight, six.
And have we uh also made that available to the public?
Yes, the public, uh where this, they can get it on Board Docs and they can all, uh so that's their primary source of it.
Okay, and the category is going to be?
Personnel.
Uh but we're not talking about personnel.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are, sir. That's by the county. This is considered private by the county. This is a personnel decision.
I'm looking at the state. The county can't trump the state.
Yes, they do. They have more restrictive requirements than the state does. This is a personnel discussion. It is someone who is working for the library, paid or unpaid.
This state says they must be employees.
Um the county has an even more restrictive one. They, you cannot talk about, all right, for one thing, you recall you went into discussion. They, you cannot talk about, all right, for one thing, you recall you went into discussion in previous years to talk about the appointment of trustees. The the county doesn't even want us to be sharing resumes. You should have to come in and look at them. This is a private matter. They do not want any of this discovered by the public. This is a personnel decision.
And I think we could have the discussion without sharing resumes. In other words, attaching names.
No, you cannot have names mentioned in this at all. People are not to know who is applying, and you're going to have to talk about names.
Why not?
Um I think you probably are. How are you going to rank them without giving names?
We look at their resume and let's say we alphabetize them and there's party A, B, or C.
It's all going into closed sessions to discuss trustees, that's how it operates, because we have.
And and the county and the county has approved this. I I don't know why you're objecting, and we're running out of time.
Well, I'm just, having done the training and pulling it from the training I I just took, it says right here, or two, the discussion must involve individual employees.
Well, um although not paid, arguably you are an employee, you're certainly serving the library. And the county has always approved us going to closed session for this, and they have more restrictive rules than the state does, which do trump the state, it specifically says so.
Well, when we're going to do something like this, I think that we ought to be pre-provided with the applicable documents. Because the one I'm working on says we cannot do this in a closed session.
Well, um we we've always done that before, and I think it's precedent, but um we can, if you like, provide you with that document in the future. It's also in your trustee manual, which is now online, all the all the county restrictions on this. As I say, they never even let our trustees previously look online at this kind of thing. They always made us, here's the resumes, you had to go look at them there, you had to leave them there. This is something that they guard jealously. I don't know how you're going to have a conversation without making it a private conversation, which they've always allowed.
All right, at this late hour, as we navigate the county rules and the state rules, and we look at our own precedent practices, um let's entertain a motion to move into closed session. Since I am one of the applicants for the new trustee position, I'm going to recuse myself and leave the room. Uh but I will, let's get this motion going and then we'll do it. Can we entertain a motion to move into closed session?
And make a motion that we move into a closed session.
You have to specify for what purpose.
For this personnel matter to discuss trustee applicant.
For a personnel matter.
Second.
All right, second from Sharon, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstained?
Abstain.
All right, excuse me, thank you all.